Please rise to salute the flag.
I'd like to wish a salute to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Basil, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Basil here. Mrs. Bytes?
Here, here.
Mr. Doty?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rathgab?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Ms. Fedowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf? Mr. Martino?
Here. It's not on the agenda, but public comment, so let me start with first the microphones for the people that weren't here last meeting. The microphones only work four at a time, so the blue button, I believe, is what will turn on your mic, but you have to wait until the red light comes on to know that your mic's live, and then if you would, when you finish speaking, please shut it off so that other people can use their mics. For the public, the procedures for public comment are the same as they've always been. Please come to the podium, write down your name and address, state your name, and then you have three minutes to speak. Mr. Kurtz will handle the device tonight. If anyone has not signed in, we appreciate if you would please it from the table to my left of the door. A couple announcements. There'll be a special voting meeting immediately following this committee at the whole meeting, and there'll be an executive session following that meeting to discuss personnel issues, legal matter, and some negotiation matters. Are there any agenda edits? Okay, is there any public comment about any agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move right into the superintendent's report. Mrs. Torshia.
Thank you. Mr. Martino, I do have an announcement right off the bat. Our girls soccer team was competing in the semifinals for the Berks County Championship, and they did lose this evening to Wilson 3-0. So congratulations to the team for getting that far, but a little disheartening that they couldn't beat those darn Bulldogs. With that being said, I would also like to recognize a few other teams that competed this past weekend in county quarterfinals. Our girls field hockey team competed at Hamburg on Saturday. They played against Ole. They fell to them. I believe it was 4-0 was the score of that game. And our boys soccer team also competed in the quarterfinals. They played against Exeter, and that game was a thriller. I didn't get to stay for the second half, but Mr. Rathgab was there, and he was texting me, letting me know that they did go into a double overtime and ended up losing 1-0. So congratulations to those three teams that had made it this far. That was wonderful. All three teams, though, do make it to the district level, so they will be continuing play. So just a little brief update with our sports. A little bit more on sports. We had Daniel Boone golfers who performed very well at the county championship, and I'm going to say yesterday, but yesterday was September 25th when they competed, so I'm sorry on the delay. Colin Gabbett, a freshman, only missed the cut by one stroke, and Jake Panning and Eric Schweitzer each shaved five-plus strokes off of their scores from last year, and Ethan Resh shot a 79 to make the cut. After playing the additional nine holes, he finished in the 25th place overall, only missing making it to districts by three strokes. And their coach says it was an exciting day, and he's incredibly proud of all the golfers. And golf counties do come up much earlier than a lot of the other teams throughout the year, so that was a little bit late announcement on our golf team. More news that I have. We have wonderful things happening already in October with regards to our students. Tia Gagliardi, a high school senior at Daniel Boone Area High School, has been selected as one of the 125 U.S. Army All-American Marching Band members. There was something in the newspaper this weekend, if you got to see it. She, sorry, the Army All-American Marching Band members produced by All-American Games. It's a bowl feature that the nation's top high school senior football players and marching musicians and color guard get to participate in. Tia will be representing Daniel Boone. She's received an all-expense-paid trip to San Antonio, Texas, to march in the halftime performance of the All-American Bowl at the Almadon. The game will be televised, so get your paper and pencil out on January 3rd at 12:00 PM. So that's some good stuff. I did print out. There were a couple of articles in the paper. If you didn't get to read the newspaper, there's a nice picture of her, and so congratulations to Tia. I will have her come in, and we will recognize her publicly again. I also have an announcement about two students that Benjamin Lindsay, I'm sorry, three students, Benjamin Lindsay, Jordan McDonald, and Ryan Young. They've been named commended students in the 2015 National Merit Scholarship Program. A letter of commendation from the school and National Merit Scholarship Corporation, which conducts the program, will be presented to the scholastically talented seniors. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2015 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2015 competition by taking the 2013 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. So congratulations to those young men. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Torshia. The Blazer Foundation update, Mrs. Bytes?
Yes. Mrs. Conlin has successfully obtained a $2,000 EIT state donation from Susquehanna. That's 500 more than last year. That's a good trend. The Greenhouse grant for the middle school, she received 5,000, and they are looking to raise an additional eight to receive the matching grant. 25 Days of Christmas raffle tickets are up and running. They've got iPads, iPad minis, Kindle Fire, Great Wolf Lodge gift certificates. Last year, this raised almost $12,000. She's also working with the teachers and staff to try to increase the teacher payroll contribution, and all of the teacher payroll contributions go right to the teacher grants. So that's a win-win, we hope, proposition for them. Her goals are to continue to generate funds to further the Blazer TV studio, increase the teacher grant funds, initiate summer enrichment programs for all the district children, and to adopt the classroom initiative, which will be launched later this year, which allows teachers to establish a webpage for a particular enrichment program. Our parents, community members, and business owners can help.
I know, sorry.
For making a donation on that page.
No, I wanted to turn mine off so other people could participate. I'm sorry. I would just like to add that she did, Stephanie Conlin, did attend our opening and service day this morning, and she did present to the faculty and staff all of those initiatives. And I know that people were waiting to meet with her at the back of the auditorium before they were leaving to get signed up. So I do wish the Blazer Foundation good luck, and they are always looking for members, so anyone sitting out there that would like to participate, they are looking to, you know, make that a larger group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bytes. Any public comment on the reports by Mrs. Torshia or Mrs. Bytes?
Hi, Wendy.
Push the...
I can yell.
You're on now.
Hi, Wendy Flickler, Union Township, 6 Queen Street. I just have a question. Any fundraisers that take place in, around, or for the school? Do a portion of those proceeds go to the school? For example, if it's for the greenhouse, does all of the proceeds for that go to the greenhouse? Or if it's for Relay for Life, do all of those proceeds go to Relay for Life?
Anything that's through Blazer Foundation, all of those proceeds come back into the school district. So not necessarily that it goes to the greenhouse. Obviously, if somebody would like to make a donation to that, and they want to designate that their donation would go to that, certainly they would accept that. With regard to Relay for Life, Relay for Life is completely separated. None of the donations come into our district. That is all for the American Cancer Society.
Oh, I wasn't sure, like, for the BRICS and the class raising of the money and whatnot. I didn't know what was included.
The BRICS was a part of Blazer Foundation at the high school, and I know that it was money that they were trying to raise to help that, I think, that greenhouse, Scott? I'm not sure. I'm losing sight of all of the different projects that Blazer Foundation has been supporting. But there's also a greenhouse at the high school, and they were paving, and I know that they are just constantly trying to raise funds to bring money back into the district.
Okay, so no funds are dedicated to a certain place?
Some fundraisers are earmarked, which is trying to say, and some are not.
Right.
Okay.
It just depends on the fundraiser.
Oh, okay.
But the Biobrick did fund that particular project right there at the school.
Right.
But I think the question, none of the money comes into the general fund, right?
No, no, no.
There's evidently misconception out there.
Oh, no. All the money that is raised by Blazer Foundation comes directly back into our building somewhere for something that, if there's many grants that the teachers are requesting, then that helps to fund that. There was a science...
Or any other...
Or anything, right.
Any other...
Right, but it stays in-house. So if you're contributing to Blazer Foundation, it comes back to benefit the students.
Through the Blazer Foundation.
Right, through the Blazer Foundation, right.
The only reason why I'm reporting is because I'm the board representative on the Blazer Foundation, so I'm just reporting on what their discussions are, and then we get to the board as a report, as any other committee member would bring a report from the committee. I understand that might be causing some confusion now because Mrs. Conlin is not giving the report. We should be very clear, just an observer at those meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add, Mrs. Torshia gave her report of students to recognize, and I just wanted to point out that two of the BCTC students won national competitions this summer. Crump won bronze for teamwork for plumbing and heating.
Okay.
And we also had Tristan Cosse won third-place bronze for EMT, and they were both in national competitions, so they won countrywide. So I think that's a great accomplishment.
And I knew they were moving along, and I hadn't gotten the results. Thank you.
I feared you probably didn't, because I know you usually do certificates for them too, but since it was on my mind, I brought it up.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mrs. Fedowski. Moving on, Mr. Kurtz, correct them in instruction committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. We had our meeting prior to this meeting at 6:00 PM. We discussed a few items. We received a presentation from Mr. Hurley about the assessment and testing situation in the district and what our scores are. It's generally good news, for most part across the board. There were a few areas where we went down, but some places where we really increased our performance, especially I believe Birdsboro Elementary. It was one of those schools. If you remember last year, it was one of the lower schools in the county, and it went up a large number of points. So that's very exciting, and we're continuing to learn about that. Something that Mr. Hurley did mention is that we are struggling along with other school districts in our teaching of writing, or our students, their scores when it comes to writing on the Keystone exams. So we're learning about how we can improve that. We're going to look at schools who have succeeded in the writing portion of that exam. So some diligence is happening there. We also discussed a student survey for AP courses at the high school to figure out what students are interested in, and where the courses we offer right now fall into that. I would hope at least, I believe the committee is to add courses that students are interested in, and if there are courses that we offer now that there isn't much interest in, we'd like to replace those courses where there is interest. Regardless, it'll be very interesting to hear the results, and that survey will go live, I believe, next week. We also discussed the selection criteria for a student board member, a student representative to the school board, and the consensus was an application will be devised by the administration, and then it will likely be interviews to fill that position. We discussed cyber snow makeup days, and the consensus was that we do not really have the capacity at this point when it comes to technology to offer that service. And finally, we discussed the 2015-2016 high school course selection catalog and the administration's recommendations for courses for next year, and they want to get that all rolling so we can get those courses enrolled, and get students enrolled in those courses sooner rather than later. We're not quite sure when the next meeting is going to be at this point. Typically, it rolls before the committee, the whole. However, our next committee and the whole meeting is going to be at the Berks Career and Technology Center, and it will be beginning a little bit earlier than usual because we're going to have a tour of that facility. So we will likely be having the meeting at a later date. It's to be determined, but just stay tuned to the website, and it should be published there. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'd just add, I'd like to just add that the school performance profile for Amity Elementary Center was a little bit lower than they expected, but Mr. Hurley assured us that that's because of the scoring metrics that have changed, that we lost some percent, some of the variables that go into that because the school was realigned last year, and it's not necessarily really a reflection on the school performing poorly. Is that fair to say, Mr. Hurley?
The value-added scores are down for that building. Yeah, the metrics have changed a little bit, and that did have some effect on that, but the value-added scores for Amity are down, so.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions?
Actually, I had a question. So what's the takeaway as it relates to, you know, what worked, what didn't work with the buildings? You know, like, obviously, you mentioned there's a weakness in writing that we're going to try to address, but in terms of BEC, what really improved at BE and C, BEC, was it an issue of the metrics again? Were we using different metrics for measuring success, and that's the reason why we suddenly scored so well? Or is it something a little bit more fundamental? So what was that?
The interventions that were put into place for reading and math in that building have paid off. The students were getting small group instruction. We were really looking at the data as far as where students were performing, and we were then getting them the interventions that they needed, extra time reading, extra time with someone, just working on the basics with them. So, and the same is true for Monocacy Elementary Center. Their scores have also gone up a bit, and it's the amount of interventions. And because we have those students, or those buildings are our Title I buildings, we did have more personnel there supporting, you know, reading and math. And so we also had another, who was it? United Way came in and had people certified, reading people that worked with small groups. So there was a lot of extra reading instruction that was going on in practice with the students. So all the efforts that those principals put into place really, you know, paid off. Last year, though, we did swap out one of the reading specialists at Amity to go and support Birdsboro because they were lower performing the year before, and I think that ended up, you know, kind of hurting us as well because we didn't have the manpower there to, you know, continue that intervention level there. Traditionally, I think we think that, you know, they were always scoring well. They'll continue to score well, and when you did take away that piece, it did hurt them.
Additionally, I think it's worth noting that the techniques that the administration utilized in Birdsboro Elementary Schools, it did see increases, are going to be implemented at Amity Elementary next year as well to get those scores out.
So what's the game plan for addressing the weaknesses in the writing skills?
We have identified key people within our staff that will come out and help to redirect, you know, teachers who might be struggling a little bit, making sure that we're hitting all of the areas that need to be hit. The other problem is what the state is requiring the students to write, and how the writing piece is implemented into the new test. So we are looking at, and, you know, Rob and Mary Beth, please, you know, chime in, because they're really spearheading the whole staff development initiative with regard to what we need to do with PSSA. But we're identifying where our weaknesses are. They're really drilling down the data so that they can find exactly what it is that we're lacking, and making sure that we're bringing that to the students. So if it's punctuation, if it's capitalization, if it's just a matter of how you're laying out a sentence, you know, are you creating a sentence properly, the data will tell us all of that, and that's where we're starting.
Let me just add, if I heard correctly, that prior to recent years, all they tested was math and science, and writing was recently added.
No, it was always a part of it, but it was only for fifth grade, fifth and eighth grade.
It didn't count for AYP, which was what it was. It was tested, and it didn't count for AYP, whether you made progress or not.
And the numbers, as Mr. Hurley presented them, are a statewide issue, not just Daniel Boone. He also presented that the writing is scored by a three-person panel who reads and scores, so it's very subjective. So really, I think we need to go back to the panels and say, the panel, and say, okay, so what is it, where are we remiss, so we know what to correct? Because until we do that, we don't know what they're looking for.
Did the data point to a specific building or a specific classroom, or is it universal across the entire district?
When you're looking at, are you looking at one particular thing, the writing metric?
Writing metric.
Yeah, it's a general rule of thumb. What you're looking at, at the elementary level, writing wasn't a concern. At the middle level, our writers, their achievement levels were decent, but with our advanced writers, we weren't doing very well at the middle level. So that's what the data was showing us right there. The writing is not successful, and the Keystone is part. It's integrated into the language arts Keystone exam, so we don't have a metric to deal with that particular piece at the high school. But as a district, generally speaking, it was a red flag for us across, yeah, the middle level.
See, I guess what I was just curious about was, is the data that you're getting, is it specific enough to help you zoom in on a specific classroom, or is it a particular building, or is it grade level, you know, or is it just kind of like, well, overall, we see there's a weakness here, so overall, we're going to change something? Or is it more, you can really get into the weeds and say, you know what, we realize that this particular classroom in this particular building, you know, this subset of students is having an issue, so that's where we need to focus our resources?
We can drill down into our data to a very minute level. We can pinpoint specific grade levels that we're having more issues with than other issues. Our writing data isn't as good as our reading data and our math data because that's been measured extensively by the AYP, the no child left behind. So we can drill down a lot, in a lot deeper way with that particular data than we can with writing. One of the things we're looking at is developing more metrics internally so that we can measure where we're at in terms of identifying students who need remediation in that particular area.
Right, so because this is a lagging indicator, right? Because you're getting the test reports back on students that are now in a different class.
Yes, correct.
So we want to make sure we're following the student with remedies.
It is a lagging indicator. Your fact is happening back.
Okay.
Would it be possible, Mr. Hurley, we've got this great report at the committee level, would this be able to be forwarded down to the rest of the board members?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Any public comment? Or correct them in instruction? Seeing none, we'll move on to building and grounds. Mr. Fedowski.
Thank you. The facilities committee met this evening before this meeting. We talked about quite a few things. We touched briefly on the facilities used for, but the administration is still working on that, so that's going to continue to be on our agenda for the next few meetings. We did report back on the Amity Township agreement. Mr. Martino, myself, and Mrs. Torshia met with Chad Lyons, the township manager for Amity, and he was more than happy to allow the school district to take back over scheduling at the athletic fields at the middle school and allow us to handle that under our scheduling and fee schedule. So the athletic department will be taking that back, and we can maintain continuity there. We talked about the summer van use by the, I guess, the Birdsboro Community Center, and the committee's feeling was that for the amount of revenue that it brought in and the potential liability or the potential for replacement of that asset should something happen, we didn't recommend continuing that agreement going forward. So unless, I guess, the board would feel really strongly that it wants to continue that for the $1,500, they were going to reach out and let them know that we wouldn't be renewing that agreement. There was a couple open items from the Matthew Brook Building lease. There was a few remaining keys that I guess they're trying to trace down, and if they can't find them, they'll have to rekey some of the locks, and we'll have a bill for that. The other item was carpeting, and they did clean the carpeting. There was one area in the hallway that didn't totally come up. There was some type of mark from moving furniture or something, and the owner is going to attempt to lease the building as is. If they need to replace the carpeting, then we would need to pay for that as well, but they're going to see if they can. It was a, my understanding is that was part of the original lease, was we were supposed to replace the carpet when we left. They agreed to allow us to clean it and see if they could lease it that way. So that is still open, but we won't have to pay for it if they can lease it as is. They reported on some assets that they'd like to dispose of. There's two vehicles. One's a 1992 Chevy Van, and the other's a 1984 Chevy Truck. One doesn't have an engine and one's not operating licensed or registered or insured. They'd like to have a salvage truck come in and just salvage those two vehicles, and we are recommending authorization of a resolution on the voting agenda so that they can dispose of those. There is a golf cart that was purchased by the Athletic Boosters to donate to the school for the athletic use, and Mr. Small asked for the board to pass a resolution accepting the golf cart donation so that they can have that put on and added on to the insurance. So we'd like to authorize the administration to prepare that resolution for the voting meeting, and I think the final thing, oh, the transition house agreement. We talked about that. Currently, that agreement, the lease, is that we get $1,000 a month for the use of that house, and the school district pays for the utilities, which average about $2,500 a year. The committee's feeling was that the utility should be covered by the tenant, and so we are recommending that we consider raising the lease to $1,250 a month next year. And again, if the board agrees, we'd like to authorize them to reach out to BCIU to discuss that. And the final item we talked about is the reserve study. Mr. Small had it overview, and he has it for the rest of the board as well, but we didn't get through all, but we just looked at kind of the totals for the next 20 years. And all in all, it looks like over the next 20 years, we're looking at a need for about $41 million in change. This is going to be the topic of the next few facilities meetings in depth. In the next five years, just off the quick map, for the next five years, we're looking at a need for probably $8.1 million. So I'm sure the facilities committee will be discussing it. The finance committee is going to be discussing it, because looking at budgeting, we're going to have to look at how we're going to budget for that. So we had a productive meeting, I think. Our next meeting will be the first Monday of November, and we're going to have the revenue enhancement at 6:00, and then the facilities at 7:15, and since we're the same people, we're going to knock both of those out.
You're going to probably have to move those, since that's the date that we're going to...
No, the first Monday.
Oh, first, got it, okay.
We're going to go back to, so we got both committees in the same night.
Great.
So I guess what we'd like to ask right now is just for the, if the administration can prepare those resolutions again for the donation, accepting the donation of the golf cart, and also the disposal of those two vehicles, and then also to reach out and talk to BCIU about the transition house agreement.
And the van rental?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the van rental.
So you're looking at those for the agenda for the next voting meeting, or tonight's special voting meeting?
Well, the resolutions would be definitely for the, because we... Well, the resolutions would be definitely for the, because we need resolutions prepared. So, but as far as the summer van use and the transition house agreement, if we can, if you can do that at the special voting meeting, that's fine. If you want to wait for the regular, that's fine too.
I don't think there's no rush. We could just, I mean, the van rental's not until next summer and the other one that leases them up right away, so.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Radzuski. Is there any other board comments or questions?
The golf cart was purchased for use at which building?
It was purchased for the high school. It is part of, it's to get around those fields.
To replace them in this area? Because I thought I saw one of them.
There is one that is there and that was donated by M&amp;G Security. And that was donated a while back, two athletic directors ago. And it's not in tip-top shape. It's not running the best. And the amount of transporting we do of people who are handicapped and need to get to the field, this will be an extra help. And M&amp;G said that they would not mind if we designated the other golf cart to help the groundsman up there to get around instead of utilizing trucks on the fields or the gator. That's also a part of the.
Or whatever light is left in it.
Correct. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a comment. When I was looking real quickly at the reserve expenditures, it just, obviously, some of the bigger ticket items that were in there making up those costs, I think we'd want to take a good hard look at it because it seems to me they lumped some of these things all together. I can't imagine that all the rooftop units at the high school would all suddenly go all at the same year type of thing. So this is where we really need to spend some time. Our facilities director and drill into these numbers and think about how these costs are actually going to hit. And whether they're going to be spread out over time or they're all going to come at once, like a roof or something else. And, you know, one of the roofs that are listed in here, I'm just kind of curious whether that can be overlaid or if that's a complete replacement. You know, there's a bunch of things in there that we can consider. So we may be able to smooth that cost curve out a little bit farther over a greater period of time. So definitely something we're going to want to delve into. So the sooner we can get our hands on the overall report, I think that would make for a more fruitful discussion.
Definitely give us something to talk about in the next few months.
Question, actually for Mr. Small. The reserve study was sent to you electronically, right? Has that been sent out to all the board members?
I only, I was on the. I have, I have the original binder in my office and we have it electronically as well.
Yeah, if you would, please send that to the board members electronically. I mean, the binder's like three inches thick. We don't need to be making another dozen buy for it. Just that, we don't need another dozen binders. But if you could send that electronically, people could look at it.
Can it be posted on the website instead as we're done with it?
Well, I wouldn't post it on there until we.
Internally?
Yeah, internally I would. But until we finalized it, because right now it's a draft and the board has to accept it. So it's like, this is one of those things where we think we need to walk through it as a board and take a look at the things that we agree with and other things that we may have questions on that they need to change before it becomes an effective tool. So definitely, I agree with Mr. Martino, we need to get our hands on it sooner than later.
It might be big to download or even, I don't think it's that big.
Yeah, I mean, if you post it on the website for the board access, I mean, that would make sense.
I think it's done. I think it's there.
It is there.
I think he's working on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any public comment on building your grounds?
Hi, I'm Michelle Miller, St. Conrad Ridge Drive in Douglasville. Did you say that you will be taking over the scheduling of the athletic fields at middle school?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Will there be fees charged to outside organizations? Have you, is that how it's going to be done then? Who schedules that? Is Goose doing that? Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Thanks.
Are they the contract? I'm sorry, I interrupted again. And I thought we were supposed to be doing that. So who, who has been doing it?
The town.
For Amity?
The town, yeah.
For the middle school grounds.
Use of the middle school fields.
Amity's been doing.
Does that include summer as well? Wendy Flue, Sixth Queen Street, Douglasville, whatever. Does that include summer as well, the district will be doing it?
Yes. Not tennis courts and not pavilions, only the fields.
Softball fields.
Correct. Yes.
And it'll be done through the district office?
Through our athletic facilitator, through Michelle Goss.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to finance, Mr. Bates. Or, I'm sorry, we, course approvals and budget transfers first. Any comments or questions about the course approvals and budget transfers in your packets? Seeing none, we'll move on to the finance committee, Mr. Bates.
The finance committee met on September 25th. We talked about the last year's budget and actual costs. There were a couple of areas there that we had highlighted that we're looking to drill down on to get some additional information, see why those costs are higher or lower than anticipated by a larger margin, just so we can make sure that we incorporate those adjustments to our assumptions going forward. The building, the business office also provided us with a spreadsheet that showed us what the expenses were tied to specific buildings. And we realized that that spreadsheet needed to be revised to be a little bit more building-specific and tied to the fixed assets, not necessarily to the students. So they're going to work on that and get it back to us. We spent some time talking about the food services contract that's coming up. The recommendation from the finance committee was to start the RFP process for full-service agreement and also an alternative RFP with the high school out of it, where we might be looking at not being a part of the federal reimbursement program for the high school. We also asked Mr. Subers, our solicitor, to be contacted to review the current SEDEXO contract to determine exactly what the reimbursement guarantee is. Compare that to what we've received to date with the SEDEXO and then make a determination as to what steps need to be taken there too. We talked about maybe outsourcing certain administrative duties within the school district, payroll being one of them. And we're not really sure what we're going to do there, but we have to take a look at that option. We also talked about the health insurance trust. Mr. Radzuski had brought to our attention Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust and some other providers that are out there that we should consider as a way of reducing some of our costs. And we were looking to get some data from those different providers and what kind of fees they would charge if we were to switch. As a result of that conversation, we moved into a discussion about the health consortium trust. We are looking to get some financial statements from the health consortium sent to the board. We're also looking to get our eyes on the governing documents for the health consortium. So that's pretty much the overall discussion that we had at the finance committee. So if you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Board members, comments or questions?
And before we move on, actually, we're going to try to schedule a meeting for the 23rd. I'm curious what time works for everybody? Would 6:30 work? Dave, would that work for you? Okay. All right. 6:30, October 23rd. We'll have it here. We're going to have a meeting. We're going to bring Lou Varelli in from RBC Capital. He approached the district with an opportunity to refinance certain pieces of our 2008 series bond issue. And a quick look at it, it's complicated to explain. The call date for this bond issue really isn't for another couple of years. However, my understanding is that the IRS allows for a particular type of call on specific bonds where you can go in and refinance a small portion of the issue on an annual basis. And even though we had discussed this issue about a year and a half ago, interest rates were not favorable to consider something like this. Whereas now that they are, so there's an opportunity to refinance a portion of the bond issue that would yield perhaps about a $500,000 savings overall to the district on its debt service over the term of the bond issue, which is up till 2033. There's some upsides to this. There's some downsides to it, which is the reason why I would encourage other board members to attend the meeting to get some of the information while we discuss it. Because the board will need to, the finance committee will need to make a recommendation to the board after that meeting as to what we're going to do to get the wheels in motion, rolling here to make a decision, to move more with the refinance or to not do it. But the board needs to be fully informed on this before we do that. So if there's others that can attend the meeting, I would encourage you to do that.
The decision is also time-sensitive, right?
That's what I mean. It's time-sensitive. So we need to move on this relatively quickly because obviously, interest rates can change at any time and go the other way. The opportunity to do this may not be there.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Board comments or questions?
I have a question about the budget transfers. General Fund books, 1746, are they textbooks? So just for my sake, should I know what categories are or is it?
Mr. Smalls, excuse me. Could you turn your mic on, please?
I don't have all the details in front of me here, but. I don't have all the details in front of me, but it would be a textbook transfer inside from Seminary to LA.
Would it be a burden on you for us to get descriptions, like curriculum development? And then the admin software, I'm curious about that. What's that for the admin stuff?
I believe we were short math books because of an additional grade level, if I'm not mistaken, that we needed to add there. So it was, it was books that were already approved, but we found that we were short and needed to get them in.
So for the math?
Yes. And, yes.
And how about the admin software? I'm just curious. What are we spending?
I believe Scott Metz might be able to speak to that one.
There is, they tried a math budget this summer for our program. About half the amount of budget that we needed, so that's transferred. The other half that purchase it was writing curriculum. My Access.
What, I'm sorry?
It's called My Access.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, and then as far as the Karen program and the, oh, sorry, I had missed that. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. Any public comment or question about finance? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. All the personnel approvals are going to be conducted in a special voting agenda following this meeting. Programs. The board members all have attachments in their packets. Are there any comments or questions about any of the programs that?
The more you use this, are you more likely to run the batteries out? Should I consider?
No, that's why we bought them. Okay.
Okay. Regarding the Karen program and the Burks online learning program, may I request that we see some sort of curriculum or some sort of program outlined in the curriculum committee? Please, I know it's a proof. I'm not suggesting otherwise, but.
The Karen Foundation doesn't have curriculum. They're there to support students within the high school and middle school level who are struggling with drug and/or alcohol and have been identified as drug and alcohol users. They are seeking these people out for counseling, for direction.
Okay. So it's counseling. It's not their, were they spread out the little program?
No.
Paraphrachymia and teachers?
No, no. They're doing small group in some ways to talk to the students about what their addiction could be, but they're there to support and to be another. And I know that Megan can probably speak to this because she worked directly with it. But they're there to be another support to the families and to the students in the building.
If you look at item A, if you look at item A, Mrs. Bates, the Family Guidance Center handles Employee Assistance Program, the AP. The Karen Foundation is Student Assistance Program, SAP.
And it also covered mental health issues too.
Correct.
So it's to provide any support for a student who may be struggling for any reason academic.
So it's individualized?
It can be individual. There will be small groups running. And it is an assessment process that we provide. And then they help connect the parents, again, just like the employee assistance programs, to connect the students and the families to services. But we do run groups and it is a support to the staff also. They're going to be doing it in service and providing instruction in faculty meetings of things to look for. They will also be able to attend the PTC meetings to provide instruction to our parents and be able to attend open houses and a lot of programming opportunities with it as well.
As far as Burks online learning, the curriculum is really dictated by the vendor that the student chooses to use through the multiple online learning vendors that are available. So the curriculum varies from vendor to vendor and we can't really control or dictate that. That's a part of the online learning, much as if they don't go to our Burks online, which we're hoping that we can keep them there because it's less money that's going out the window to the other vendors.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other piece that we haven't really discussed was the Kutztown University and it's to allow them to continue providing student teachers. Any other board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy committee meeting. Mr. Curtis?
I'm scheduled for October 27th at 6:00 p.m. here in the cafeteria. There will be an agenda posted online.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Board comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Moving on to transportation.
Can I back you up, please? I'm sorry. Letter H, the appointment of TCC delegate discussion.
Go ahead.
That is, that, I received an email from, that's EIT board. Did you want to speak about the, yes, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak to the TCC at Burks EIT?
So in the packet, you'll see there's a resolution to approve the merger between Burks EIT and the TCC. First of all, are there any questions on that? So let's take a step back one second. I understand it's reasonable for the merger. So once that process is complete and they're asking all the districts that are in the EIT to pass a resolution, the school board will have a resolution to do so. And that resolution will authorize myself to vote at that next meeting to consolidate the two organizations. So once that's done, TCC will now consist of all the districts as well as all the municipalities that are in Burks County. So districts will still retain a vote. So we need to appoint a person to be the representative as well as an alternate. And then each of the townships will have a vote as well. And what they're trying to do there though is trying to, if a district is in the same, so Union, Burksboro, Amity could appoint one person to represent them at the, at the TCC meeting. But they can still direct where their vote goes through that person. But the effort there is, there's always an issue with getting a quorum at TCC because you have so many different entities. So that would, there is that then going forward, we won't have, we would not have a problem with getting a quorum at these meetings. So basically, we need to, we need to appoint our delegate for next year as well as an alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Radzuski.
I had a question for you. Mr. Radzuski, are the votes still diluted on a percentage basis? Or is it one vote per district or municipality?
Actually, I have to say, I'm unclear because there was discussion on that. And I can clarify that with the Burks EIT listener, I'll get an answer to you on that. Because there was discussion about that, having the districts have a higher percentage of that vote. Because obviously, once it was pointed to TCC like that, then the districts vote that obviously is much diluted compared to what it is right now.
Well, I think the sticking point, as I recall, when this issue was brought up like two, three years ago, was on the Burks EIT, the 18 school districts, everybody has one vote, one of 18. You're all the same. At the TCC, you have a percentage of a vote, or your vote is weighted, let me put it that way, in the overall voting scheme. So certain school districts, you know, their vote could be 12%.
So certain school districts, you know, their vote could be 12% of the overall vote, whereas others may only be 1%. And, and certain municipalities might be a fraction of a percent in terms of their weight in, you know, the vote came up. And so that was the biggest concern that most people had on the board at that time was two or three school districts, in essence, could control the T C C and how it operates, and everybody else was just there as a, you know, as an empty suit. So I'd be curious to see how that was...
I'll get a clarification for you, but I think they did work that out, but I'll get the exact answer for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rat, let me, let me just add to that question. If we find out that it is weighted and we're not happy with it, we really don't have much choice. It's a fait accompli, isn't it?
Basically, we, if the E I T did not merge with T C C, basically, we were told T C C would have to bid. In essence, they would, and if Burks E I T lost a bid, in essence, Burks E I T is out of business. And what we were told, there are a couple of other companies out there that will come in a low-ball bid and undercut E I T just to get the business at which point down the road, and then obviously, they're free to raise their rates later on. So yeah, this is your answer to the question. Yeah, basically.
And that weighting is set by the state law, by the, by the Act 32 law. So it's not, in order to override that weighting, the whole, you have to get young folks to override it in this district, so...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's good that we find out, but I don't think we have much choice in the matter of the party.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Basel was obviously on the meeting longer than I, my short time there. Obviously, I would prefer to keep Burks E I T in existence. I think they do a good job at a very low price. But I just don't think that that's feasible. Unfortunately, I don't think we can, it's going to happen. It's merger, as you would say, is a fait accompli, and it is what it is.
Thank you. Any public comment on what we just discussed? Moving on to transportation. What's on here is to approve the bus driver stops from, from New Roads and Clines. I've actually asked Mr. Small to look into this farther. I'm still hearing an awful lot about children being on the bus very, very long. And then I heard the other day about some bus routes that because of the, the bridge closing between 724 and 422, that some buses are diverted, and it seems like buses are going out of their way. So what I asked Mr. Small is if this computer program that exists that I've never seen, but if it could provide an overlay of color-coded routes, so we could see how many routes crisper us each other, or how many routes are going out of the way a lot. And I know, just, just driving down Russell a few times, I've seen three and four buses coming down, one right after the other on Russell Avenue, and it seems like, it seems like it needs to be looked at. So Mr. Small is calling to, he's already contacted Ron Smith to see if we can look at that. Any comments or questions about transportation?
Well, I was going to say, you know, that I did probably notice, I did that, and you did, but I did notice that quite a few routes are scheduled to be at least an hour if they're running on time.
Well, I said, I mean, I drove a school bus here when I first retired, and I picked up children on, on the more Latin area west of, of Old Airport Road, and then went over and picked up elementary school children on the east side of Old Airport Road. But there were all kinds of other buses, I mean, several other buses, all in the same neighborhoods, and it just seemed like there was a lot of duplication of effort, and I don't know if that still exists or not, but I think it needs to be looked at.
I understand that there's some, our state subsidies are tied to whether or not a student is physically on the bus or not.
You got to give it a chance to come on.
One student on a bus is a loaded bus, plus loaded miles. So if you want more loaded miles than unloaded miles, kind of route to maximize your state subsidy, definitely one of those to go.
So I think we need to look at...
Can that be audited or something? Because there has to be a trade-off there.
Well, I think we need to look at is the cost of our bus runs equal to or better than the state subsidy. Because again, we're going back to when I drove the, the middle school run, my first stop was over in Avamoore, and then I went all the way down Old Airport Road, made a left at Yellow House and went down the Meeting House with, with a couple kids on the bus.
It's typical to do that, right?
That's a loaded bus. One student is a loaded bus.
So I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that, I was approached by a former school board member that said, if you would look at the state subsidy versus what it's costing us, we may not be gaining. So I don't know.
I have one other comment about the busing. I know on at least one run that bus starters are waiting, and I don't know if this is the mechanism for it or not, but I know they're waiting like up to three minutes for students to come out of the house and get on the bus. And when you look at that, there's 20 kids on a run, after all, this is, the Burks Capital bus is the one I'm referring to, which puts the kids up there late for school, and then the number one problem that I see with it is because they're waiting so long.
The rule is, is the children are supposed to be at the bus stop five minutes before the scheduled pickup. However, if you're at the bus stop and you see the kids a half a block away, you can't drive away and leave them stranded at the bus stop, so you're going to wait for them. Now, you're not supposed to sit there for three minutes. I mean, the only time you would wait is if you have them in sight.
So that's the mechanism for me. Is that Transportation Committee?
Really, that's up to the individual bus driver. I mean, that, that's already established, but now if a bus driver chooses to wait, I guess that would, I guess the Transportation Committee could, could meet with the bus company.
I'm curious as to how much that's been done. Widespread Boston District, we pay for the gas in addition to the contracts, right? So they're idling for three minutes, you know, 10 kids, a run. I'm just not seeing it. I'm seeing it as a lost efficiency.
Now, the bus, I have to tell you, the bus runs I've asked Mr. Small to look at were for our schools, because, because the, all the other schools we deliver children to, they could be a distance and, you know, we're only picking up a minimal amount of children, so, so they could be circling around.
Is there somewhere we can audit that they're actually meeting these time timelines, the pickups that they're supposed to be and their arrivals and stuff? Is there an audit mechanism to see how close they are running to their schedule?
Nothing that I am completely aware of, and I think traffic dictates that, weather dictates that, there's a lot of different things. I'm hoping that they're getting on the road at the time that they're supposed to be. I know that we have moved our loading of the buses and unloading of the buses to, you know, science, like we, we have really sped that up so that we don't have buses, you know, that are waiting in long lines. Exactly. We're taking students off. We have teachers coming in early to make sure that as the buses are pulling up to the middle school at 7:05, 7:10, that they're able to be somewhere, because there's almost, almost the whole population of the middle school is getting dropped off in order for us to be able to get those bus runs moving so that we can start the elementary pickup. So I'm hoping that they are moving at the rate that they should be legally. But with regard to waiting for students, I haven't heard that one, and I've heard a lot of different...
Maybe it's just an ingredient.
I've never seen a bus video, but if you had a bus that was constantly late, I have to believe that the, the video is timestamped. So I mean, if you have a bus that's occasionally late, I think if we pulled the video, you could see are they at the specific stops at times.
Thank you.
Any board comments or questions about transportation? Public comment about transportation? Seeing none, we'll move into old business. Mr. Basel, there are four items here, and they'll have your name next to them.
Well, I like to keep a list of things that we've discussed and make sure that they're being addressed as we go forward, so that's what this is in reference to. And obviously, B and C were addressed by the Facilities Committee. I guess the question I had was, is it related to, A, at the last meeting, Brian Subers was going to review that medical staffing network agreement and just make some recommendations there, too, so I just wasn't sure where that stood.
At 4:38 this evening, he did send it out to myself and all of you. I tried to peruse it a little bit as we were sitting here. It looks like there are some recommendations that he would like to make before we go ahead and approve it. Just things that, that there must be, they must be based outside of Pennsylvania, so there's things that aren't pertaining to specifically Pennsylvania. It looks like it's Florida. He wants to make those changes to make sure it's Pennsylvania.
I think some of the generals term, listen, play.
Right, yes. So I was, I was reading through it, but I will get more detail and talk to him about his recommendations tomorrow.
Okay, great. I wasn't aware that I committed. Thank you. And then the other issue was, the business office was going to do a departmental building audit of Mr. Small to review, make sure we had all of the contracts that were out there and we were aware of them, and that they've all been put in front of the, in a ticker file somewhere that the, our superintendent's aware of them, that you're aware of them. Has that audit been completed?
It's not completed, but you're adding more all the time.
It's ongoing, we're...
It's ongoing.
Yes.
Are you doing it by building, or what's the approach?
It's just what?
Yeah, it started with buildings and grounds first. That was where a large number of them are, and then we were looking at the school-related ones, the building-related ones, like the things that you're seeing this evening with the Karen Foundation, general ones with Kutztown University. Now that I'm thinking, you know, about it, we also do have an agreement with Alvernia. I should bring that one forward.
Have you utilized RAC, too?
No, I have not utilized RAC, and that might be for higher education, like if we were doing something with dual enrollment, but I haven't seen anything with that with GIFT. But as, as we're talking about things and things that we haven't routinely approved that we need to bring to the attention, not necessarily approval, but at least bring to light to everyone, we're constantly going through them and saying, okay, we need to bring that on, put that on.
I guess the question I have then, for, for my own peace of mind, and not just, this is a standing item every single, every single, is there an end date when you anticipate having to put all this stuff together?
June, I would say the end of the, I would hope that we have gotten cycled through everything and that everything has come to light, because we're still inheriting things that, you know, weren't ours to have owned. So I'm, I'm thinking that, I would hope that we're all done with this by June 30th, Mr. Basel.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm writing that down.
Okay, please.
Mrs. Twish, I want to thank you for your efforts to bring these things into the light. I really appreciate that. And Mr. Small?
Other board comment or questions? Any public comment or questions regarding old business? Under new business, Burks Vocational Technical School Authority Representative Discussion, Mrs. Twish.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Basel, because he might be the only one that can recollect the history on this. I received an email from the Burks Career Center saying that Mr. Kirshner's term of office on the Burks Vocational Technical School Authority will expire on December 31st, 2014. Please advise me if Mr. Kirshner will be reappointed to another five-year term or provide the name of your new representative to the Burks Vocational Technical School Authority. I first was going to write back and say, but Mr. Kurtz was only on the B C I U board, and I don't know of a Kirshner. So everyone's telling me that you will.
This was five years ago, obviously, so let me just make sure I just, because it came up, and nobody knew who this gentleman was the last time, and he's just this, you know, citizen in the district who volunteered for this position, and my recollection, the last time he looked at this, he actually got wind of it and showed up at the next meeting and said, I'm the gentleman that you're curious about, and I'm happy, you remember it, so, and he said, I'm happy to continue to serve in this capacity going forward. And so board said, all right, you're approved, and here we are. So I'm not sure what the role is that he plays there, how often the meetings take place, and whether we ought to get somebody who's, you know, attending these things with more frequency and reporting.
He does, he does attend, he doesn't report to us.
I see.
He just wants to be our rep, from what I'm understanding. Now, I have not had any dialogue with Mr. Kirshner, this is just information I've gotten. He doesn't replace our B C T C rep, who is Tamara.
I think it's not, it's not a board position, it's a citizen position.
Right, yes.
So if he's happy to do it, I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
Then I can respond back and let them know.
For a month, I think I remember this discussion too, a long time ago, which I guess is a testament to, I guess I've been involved too long, maybe. But I think they have a meeting once a year, and it really exists to continue, if there, I believe the authority has the ability to raise revenue if there is a school that needs to be built or made. They raise revenue to build the B C T C, and it has to meet once in nearby law to continue to exist. I believe that is my recollection, at least what it was. And I believe Mr. Kirshner also is on this school board, had to go to the school board in the 70s, which is a funny fact, but I don't know.
Wow, where'd you pull that one?
The other I would ask, if you have a way to contact them, if they, if they meet infrequently, it would be nice if you'd let us know what they met about.
Okay. We will, we will attempt to reach out to Mr. Kirshner. Burks Career and Technology Center is just getting ahead of themselves, because this does not expire until December, but we'll make sure that we, up until October 7th, I didn't know that Mr. Kirshner was an active representative for us, so we will follow through and I will provide some feedback to the board.
We're going to be there November 10th, so maybe we could ask them more about it while we're on tour.
Maybe we can. Thank you.
Board comments or questions about Mr. Kirshner? Any public comment or questions? Seeing none, is there any public presentation on any issue? Saying none, do we have a motion to adjourn? We move right into the special voting meeting. I know some of the board members have...